Welcome to this training session entitled Attendance Statutory Legal Intervention. This session has been put together to support colleagues in Essex schools to prepare for the introduction of a national threshold and framework for legal intervention. My name is Anita Patel Lingam, I'm the Statutory Education Compliance Manager at Essex County Council, and I'm recording this session on the 22nd of July 2024. I'd like to begin by setting out the aims and objectives of this training session. Essentially, I'd like to help colleagues to understand the role and the remit of the attendance compliance team and how this fits in with the updated Working Together to Improve School Attendance Guidance. Colleagues should, by the end of this session, understand the key changes within the updated guidance, particularly in relation to the national threshold and the national framework. I'd like for colleagues to be clear about the transition arrangements which are going to be applied to existing and pending cases as we all move away from our current local approach across to the new national framework approach that's required of all local authorities and schools. I'm hoping that colleagues by the end of this session will feel confident in managing parental expectations in relation to the consequences that they may face if unauthorized absence patterns are being recorded and are an ongoing concern for those particular schools concerned. I'd like for colleagues to have a clear understanding of what is meant by Support First and how this will need to be meticulously evidenced in all cases where you are as a school asking for statutory legal intervention by the local authority via the attendance compliance team. This session is possibly going to leave you with a bit of a to-do list to support your preparations, making sure that everything is ready and good to go from the 19th of August or the start of the new academic year. If you're wondering why the 19th of August is the date that the DFE put for when this all becomes effective, it's because some local authorities go back for the start of the 2024-25 academic year from the 19th of August. But obviously for us, this is all going to apply from the beginning of our academic year in September. The attendance compliance team is a team that sits within the education compliance team. That team also has within it the Children Missing Education and Electoral Home Education team. From August 2024, there will be five attendance compliance officers, and none of those officers has a role or a remit in family casework or family support. It's really important for colleagues to understand that. Essentially, the attendance compliance officers within the team are not going to be going looking for any evidence to support legal action in any case that's been put forward to us. What we're actually responsible for doing is looking at what referers are sharing with us in terms of information and making sure that that information that's come through makes it really clear that legal action is being asked for as an appropriate last resort in those cases. The attendance compliance officers review all of the referrals that come through, and they'll be considering whether or not the pre-referral information is sufficient to allow us to take a prosecution into the courts under either section 4441 or 1A of the Education Act 1996. When we receive referrals in, we need to apply the same consideration about the appropriateness of prosecution to all of the requests that we get, even for penalty notices. And the reason for that is that where parents choose not to pay their fines or take their out-of-court settlement, however you wish to frame that, we are then required to revert those cases back to the original offence, which is an offence under section 4441 or 1A of the Education Act. So essentially, if a parent chooses not to pay their fine, their penalty notice, then we will need to feel confident that we've got enough evidence in front of us to be able to take that case into the court under a prosecution, and that that will be a successful outcome in terms of court action. The team do request information directly from parents. We've got dedicated forms where we ask parents to share any information that they would like us to be aware of when we're making decisions about whether prosecution is appropriate. And the attendance compliance officers are responsible for preparing legal files so that they're ready for listing in front of magistrates. As part of that role, they have to have due consideration of what's known as the Code for Crown Prosecutors. Essentially, what we need to be really clear on is that the legal action that we're taking is seen to be in the public interest. So I'll give you an example of where legal action may not be in the public interest. If we were to receive a referral in for direct prosecution in late May for a year 11 pupil, for example, we would see that not to necessarily be a case that's in the public interest for us to pursue that prosecution, because actually by the time we've got everything ready and listed for the magistrates, that pupil is going to no longer be of statutory school age. The only time that we might caveat that is if potentially there are younger siblings in the system whose attendance is also a grave cause for concern, in which case we might then consider that that particularly year 11's case to be in the public interest. But those decisions are made on a case-by-case basis, based on the information that we hold as local authority and obviously the information that's shared with us by the referrer. The attendance compliance officers are responsible for presenting cases on behalf of Essex County Council, so they represent the local authority at magistrate's courts across the county. And they are obviously then as part of that role fielding various questions that the magistrates choose to pose about the information that we're presenting. And sometimes what you'll find as school-based colleagues is that when we're having patterns emerging in terms of the types of questions that magistrates might be asking, we will adapt our practice in terms of the information or the updates that we require from our schools ahead of those court dates so that we're aware and we're prepared to be able to answer those questions if we're then faced with the same questions again moving forward. So don't be surprised if you've got a case in the system and we ask for one set of information before we go into court, and the next time we're contacting you about a different case, the information that we're asking for may be slightly different. It's highly likely that's due to the fact that we've got emerging patterns in terms of questions that are coming through from the courts. The attendance compliance officers may attend team around the family meetings or child in need review meetings, child protection conferences, but they'll only really do that if we've got cases sitting within our legal process where they need to obviously go along and share where we're at with that process, but also to try and understand where other colleagues in that family support network are with their interventions with that particular family. Important for colleagues to understand that the attendance compliance officers don't sit within the quadrant team model. So the education compliance team as a whole is managed centrally under the Specialist Education Services, and I manage all of those colleagues. Every school, though, does have a named officer, single point of contact, and those are sort of divided up for different quadrants, different districts, et cetera. And the next slide does show you who your named contact would be. So you should be able to figure out from the next slide, this slide here, who it is out of those five officers named you would need to contact if you've got any specific queries about cases that you are either thinking are ready for referring in or are already referred in and you'd just like an update. In addition to the attendance compliance officers, I also have two attendance compliance support assistants. They're in the background supporting the attendance compliance officers in their preparation and collation of key documents, obviously getting those legal files really, really ready for that court action. The information that they'll be collating will be things like updated attendance certificates, sibling information that magistrates sometimes like to have an idea about. They're liaising directly with Essex Court listings to make sure that all of our cases are listed within a timely manner. And just for colleagues who weren't aware, we are required to make sure that we list our cases within six months of the offence having been committed. So if we're pressing you for updates or information, it's likely that we've got a deadline looming, so please don't delay in getting that information over to us. The attendance compliance support assistants also take calls and process payments from parents who are wanting to make those payments against fines via the telephone. Some parents do like to call and try to appeal the fact that they've been issued with penalty notices, although there is actually no right of appeal to those types of fines. And sometimes they contact us asking for an extension of the payment deadlines because the dates that are in their penalty notice paperwork aren't something they can actually achieve. But all parents in Essex do have the option to pay their fines online, and that's something that we've moved towards in recent years. So the calls that come through are from those parents who genuinely want to speak to somebody about the fines that have been issued for one reason or another. We also have in the background additional support through our business support colleagues. Two of them are directly employed within the team now. And then we have additional support from Bank of Business Support Assistants that are held more centrally. The business support colleagues are the ones who are reviewing all of the penalty notice requests that come in as a result of a term-time holiday. They'll be checking all of that pre-referral evidence that's coming through, whether the request from a parent is included, whether the response that you as a school has sent out, the attendance certificate obviously that shows those G codes specifically so that we can move forward and issue those fines. They issue all of those penalty notices on behalf of local authority, specifically in relation to those term-time holidays. They're obviously looking for those 10 or more sessions of G code before they issue those fines. And in terms of monitoring those cases until day 28, it's the business support colleagues within the team who do that. And obviously, if those fines then remain unpaid, those cases transfer across to the attendance compliance support assistants so they can start the preparations for prosecution. Really important for colleagues just to understand, though, obviously I've shared a slide previously about who your link attendance compliance officer will be, just so that you're aware, if there's a term-time holiday penalty notice that's been issued and that remains unpaid, then the attendance compliance officer who picks up the prosecution preparation for those cases may not be your allocated officer. Those are picked up depending on capacity within the team. So just bear that in mind if you're seeking updates. At the moment, obviously through Essex Schools Info Link, schools can self-serve for those updates. So you can log back into Essex Schools Info Link and you can see all of the fine requests that you've made, whether they've been issued, whether they've been paid within 21 days or 28 days. So we've obviously got that system in place for schools to be able to just check for themselves. But if you do call into the team, just be aware that the attendance compliance officer who is your link attendance compliance officer may not be the one that's dealing with those term-time holiday unpaid fines. There are a number of examples of challenges that the team face when they're reviewing cases or they're preparing for court. That preparation for court and that reviewing of information carries on right up until the court date. And we do sometimes find ourselves surprised that we've not been made aware of things that have changed in that family dynamic or family situation. So here are some examples of the sorts of things that we would expect to have been updated about, and we would expect you to communicate to us as soon as possible. Sometimes we've found that families have moved house, and as a local authority, we've not been informed, and just bear in mind the significance of that. So if we don't have the most up-to-date address for families who we're taking legal action against, we may well send important legal paperwork to the wrong address, the old address. So it's really important that you've got the right system in place as a school to notify us as quickly as possible where there is a change of address for families. In addition to that, we're sometimes surprised that other agencies have become involved since the referral was made and that nobody's let us know about that. So there are other people supporting the family, and we might need to be factoring in that support in our decision-making around whether legal action remains appropriate or whether it needs to be paused. Also, we sometimes find out too far down the line that referrals have been made for support and that the referral's actually been accepted, but maybe the family are on a waiting list awaiting that support. We need to be aware of that as a local authority when we're taking legal action against families for non-attendance. Also, we have situations where parents have possibly been into school for a meeting. They've raised various issues about what's going on that are affecting attendance, and schools are obviously then busy in the background working to remove any barriers. We need to be aware of those updates because that might then influence information that's presented in courts, or it might even influence whether or not legal action is still deemed to be appropriate from both perspectives, local authority or school. Also, we find that team around the family meetings are being held, but we've not been invited or even informed about those meetings. That's not ideal practice because obviously we might have had something significant to contribute to those meetings, but equally there may be something said in those meetings that we need to be aware of as part of our decision-making. The other thing that we'd obviously like schools to be thinking about is whether there are any other family members who attend other schools. And when you are thinking about the action that you are taking against a particular pupil that's on roll with yourselves, whether you've factored in whether there needs to be any joined action, joined approach between yourselves and other schools who've maybe got siblings on roll, what's happening with their attendance. If they're going on a holiday as a family, what's the response of the other schools in terms of requesting penalty notices, et cetera? Really important that as far as possible you coordinate those responses, try and be consistent in those responses because it does impact our cases sometimes where parents have been fined by one school but not the other. Obviously, it is always down to each head teacher's discretion as to whether or not penalty notices are requested. But just be mindful that if a parent receives a fine from one school but not the other, they tend to think they've got a defence, and they try to kind of argue out, well, this school didn't think it was that significant to ask for penalty notices, that's why we haven't paid our fine for the school who they believe were too harsh in that situation. It's also important as well that when you're sending in your referral paperwork, that the wording and the impression that you give us of families is accurate. So as an example, sometimes we will receive a chronology that comes in where it specifically states very clearly that from the person making the referrals perspective, that parent has absolutely not been engaging. But then we later find out parents when they come into court will say, well, I did attend meetings. I attended them with the head of year or the class teacher. I just didn't attend the meetings with the attendance officer. When we receive information on a chronology or in that referral paperwork, we'll present it as it's being put to us. So if you say the parent isn't engaging at all with the school, then we will assume that that is an accurate reflection of what's going on. It's not helpful for us if we then go into court and find parents being able to produce evidence, say, well, I've been going in for meetings with these other members of staff. So do please, if you are the person that's going to be hitting submit on that referral into my team, you are making those necessary internal checks to make sure that what you say about those families and what you present in terms of your experience is an accurate reflection of the full level of information that's held at the school about that particular parent or family. It's also really important, I suppose, at this point for us to make it really clear that when you're coding absence, that you are clear that you've used the right codes in the right circumstances. So for example, if you've got a policy that states that you offer medical evidence to support certain types of absence, then just think about where you might have seen that pupil in school feeling unwell, possibly even being the ones who've sent that child home because of how well they're presenting. Do you actually need medical evidence to support that absence when you saw it with your own eyes? So medical evidence may not necessarily be a necessary thing to be requesting in those circumstances. You've got the evidence, having seen it for yourselves, that the I code is an appropriate code on that particular day. If you are receiving medical evidence, I would ask that you look at that very carefully, and depending on the nature of the evidence that's in front of you, you look very carefully as to whether or not you have got some justification in authorizing some or all of the absences that you've got recorded for that particular pupil. So do definitely be informed by that evidence and use it, don't ignore it. If you've got one of those 24 or 48-hour policies in regards to sickness, then just be very mindful as to how that's being managed in school. One of the things that I'd urge colleagues to be mindful of is that it's very unlikely if you've got a sicky child at home that parents are going to be able to get a doctor's appointment, let alone then get medical evidence to support that sickness. So just be really careful about how you apply that particular policy and what you ask for in terms of evidence, and whether it's a reasonable request for evidence, whether it's something that parents can actually reasonably be expected to secure in the timeframe that they've got. Bear in mind, it's difficult to get GP appointments at the moment in the best of circumstances. If parents do then try to potentially bring those sick children into school and you turn them away because that's your policy, then you need to be really clear that in your own mind that those absences would need to be authorised because it's not the parent's fault, the child not in school, it's the policy. So the parents are then being required to obviously adhere to the policy that you've got in place. One of the things that we wanted to make really clear to colleagues, just in case you've never had the pleasure of coming into court to observe any cases, maybe as a witness in trial situations, is that when we're in court, we obviously have our opportunity to share the case, the evidence that we believe means that we have a case against that particular family. And once we've given our evidence, we sit down, and it's then the turn of the parent or the duty solicitor to share any information that they believe maybe defends that parent against the information that we've shared. If during the parent or the duty solicitor's opportunity to share information, there's stuff that is raised that isn't in our evidence, that we weren't able to cover because we weren't aware, we didn't have the updates or the information wasn't shared by schools, we're not always in a position, in fact, we're rarely in the position to be able to stand up and mitigate or rebut what those parents have said. So just be aware that it's the parent's word that's the last word in court. So unless we're asked for our thoughts on what's been shared by the parent or we're given an opportunity to rebut the information, then having significant issues or updates not shared with us can actually undermine our case, and it can then lead to things like reduced fine levels. Or worst-case scenario, some of those cases could then be met with an absolute discharge. In terms of sentencing, that's always a matter for the courts. We do sometimes have the opportunity to recommend what we believe would be an appropriate sentence in a particular case, but it is absolutely down to the courts to make that final decision. Parents are given the opportunity to share a means form, so any fine amounts are usually based on that information that's been shared on that means form, so any income issues, that kind of thing. In terms of our measure of success as a local authority, it's always been about securing a conviction. It's not about the fine level, so do bear that in mind if you do have parents who have fined what appear to be low levels of a fine. Just bear in mind that in terms of that measure of success, that parent was found to be guilty, so we secured that conviction regardless of what sanctions the court choose to impose in those situations. You may be wondering why this training has been delivered and why now? So the Department for Education updated, they're working together to improve school attendance guidance in February of this year. They published it on the 29th of February 2024. That updated version of the guidance introduces what is known as their National Threshold for Legal Intervention, and in addition, a national framework for penalty notices. Both of those things come into effect on the 19th of August or the start of the new academic year. So it's going to be September for us in Essex. When they were putting together the guidance, the original version of the guidance that was published in May 2022, the DFE worked really closely with attendance leads like myself in local authorities, national associations who've got a specific school attendance focus, and leaders within schools and multi-academy trusts. So the first iteration of the guidance which came out in May 2022 was put together in conjunction and collaboratively with lots of different people. There was always, within that May 2022 version of the guidance, a clear expectation for all schools, multi-academy trusts, governing bodies, et cetera, to take all necessary steps to make sure that the guidance that was put out in May 2022 was being worked towards. And it was really clear at that point that the DFE had very clear plans to place the guidance onto a statutory footing at some point in the future at the earliest available opportunity. Since May 2022, the DFE have worked really closely again with various partners to review the guidance, and that then led to the updated version, which was obviously published in February. At that point, when that guidance was published, they've laid, the DFE laid all the relevant regulations to make sure that that version of the guidance that was published in February 2024 was good to go, to be placed onto a statutory footing from the 19th of August. So regardless of the outcome of the recent general election, the fact that we've had a change of government, that doesn't impact at all the fact that this particular guidance is going to be placed onto that statutory footing as of the 19th of August 2024. Really important for colleagues to understand the changes that are being shared as part of this training because essentially the national threshold and national framework replace the criteria that we've been working to locally in terms of the Penalty Notice Code of Conduct. The national framework for penalty notices brings with it prescribed escalation processes and also prescribed limits on the number of fines that any one parent can receive for any one child within a particular timeframe, and it significantly impacts the use of penalty notices to address irregular school attendance and term-time holidays. I think it's a positive that we've got a national framework for penalty notices. At the moment, we've got a bit of a postcode lottery in play with a local authority that borders very many different local authorities, and each of those different local authorities, Suffolk, Redbridge, Hertfordshire, et cetera, they've got different criteria and different thresholds to issue penalty notices. So I actually think that having a national threshold and a national framework removes that postcode lottery and just puts us all onto a slightly more level playing field in terms of these fines and how they're used. For all cases coming into the local authority, once this new threshold is in place, a new framework is in place, it does impact quite significantly the pre-referral expectations and the fact that those are going to need to be in line with Support First ethos and approach that's at the heart of the culture and ethos that's promoted within the updated guidance. Local authorities have been told in no uncertain terms under the updated guidance that we must be issuing penalty notices in line with the national framework, where the absences have been unauthorized and where support has been offered, and whether that's either not worked or it's not been engaged with, or where support has been deemed inappropriate, for example, where it's a term-time holiday scenario. We are also, as a local authority, required to take forward attendance prosecution as a last resort where all other routes have been exhausted or where they've been deemed inappropriate. The attendance compliance team also wants to obviously be able to support schools with statutory legal intervention. So this session was put together as a bit of a heads-up really to colleagues so that you understand what we're going to need so that we can accept your referrals moving forward with all the confidence that we would require to be able to say that the statutory guidance has been followed and we are taking legal action as an absolute last resort. The current local conduct that we've been working to, that is in place right up until the end of the academic year and applies to all absences that are recorded right up until the end of this academic year, that allows us at the moment to be able to issue penalty notices where there are three days or six sessions of unauthorized absence within the first two calendar weeks of September. Be aware that that's not the first two weeks that you are open as a school for the start of the academic year. It's the first two calendar weeks of September, so the 1st of September to the 14th of September. Five days of absence, 10 sessions of absence would also trigger our current local code of conduct for the range of the academic year, and those absences need to have been recorded within the previous 10 school weeks. And they need to have been recorded as either G, O, and/or U code. They can be a combination or one of the same type of absence. At the moment, we're able to issue parents with a maximum of two penalty notices per parent, per child, within any 12-month period. That's a really important bullet for you to be aware of because that's one of the significant changes that the national framework brings into place. We've also, and we've always had the provision, to be able to issue suspended excluded pupil penalty notices where those pupils are seen within a public place within the first five days of their suspension. We're able to issue a maximum of two of those suspended excluded pupil penalty notices per parent, per child, again, within a 12-month period. And all of the fines that we issue at the moment are issued at a rate of £60 per parent, per child, and parents have 21 days to make that £60 payment. If they don't pay within 21 days, then that fine does double to £120. And if parents then fail to pay the fine at £120, then obviously we're going to be looking at things like prosecution. But they have the further seven days to pay the doubled rate, so up until day 28 to pay that increased fine level. We don't offer payment plans, although we are asked a lot of the times to put those in place. We don't offer those, and there's no right of appeal to these types of penalty notices. Payment extensions are, in very exceptional circumstances granted, usually it's where parents say, my payday is this date, and I'm expected to pay the lower rate at the day before, can I just have a one-day extension? And we do generally grant those, but we need to obviously be understanding of those exceptional circumstances as and when they're presented to us. So that was the old, the current way of working, which is going to be an old way of working when we move forward. The new national threshold for legal intervention essentially introduces a consistent 10 sessions of unauthorized absence threshold within a rolling 10 school week period. What is a school week, you'll be asking yourself? Well, a school week is any week where pupils have got the opportunity to attend school. So I'll give an example, if you've got a bank holiday on the Monday and then two inset days, for example, on the Tuesday and the Wednesday, if pupils are then coming in on Thursday and Friday, that will be a school week within this rolling 10 school week period. So although there were only four sessions or two days of attendance that the pupils could achieve within that particular week, it is a school week as far as this particular threshold is concerned. Absences may be recorded across that 10 rolling school week period, and that 10 rolling school week period can span different academic years, different school terms, school placements, and those include the ones where maybe they've moved from a school that wasn't in Essex into a local Essex school. As long as we're able to capture the absences at both of those schools and we know that they happened within a 10-rolling school week period, then essentially the threshold is met for that particular pupil. These are examples, so year two to three transition where maybe a pupil is moving from an infant to a junior school, different academic years, but actually the absences on either side of that summer holiday period could count towards meeting the national threshold. Year six to seven transition, equally the same applies. Cross-border school placement changes, as I've alluded to, if they went to school in a different local authority area, as long as we've got the attendance records and we can see that you've got the evidence that the pupil missed some sessions and those were unauthorized before they joined you, and then they've had further absences recorded whilst they've been with you, that meets the threshold as far as the new way of working will be concerned. But also different terms. One of the key things obviously that's going to be really important moving forward is that you are maintaining sort of consistent oversight of the way that absence has been recorded, that you're closely monitoring that. That's going to be crucial moving forward if you're going to try and rely on this national threshold and new way of working. We're also going to want to be able to see that the national threshold has been met using only O, U, or G codes. Those can obviously be recorded, just one type of code, so obviously in term-time holiday scenarios, there may just be loads of G codes recorded because they went on a holiday and they've triggered the national threshold as a result of that. But there may also be circumstances where there's a combination of all of those types of codes. The O code is obviously unauthorized absence for other reasons. The U code is unauthorized late, and the G code is specifically for where a family has gone on holiday and where you've not felt there's exceptional circumstances and you've unauthorized those absences. In terms of the U code, it's really important that I say at this point that there is guidance very clearly within the new updated guidance around the closure of registers specifically. The updated guidance makes it really clear that schools must close their registers within 30 minutes of the registration period opening. So I'll give an example, if you have a registration session that opens at 8:30 and then closes at 8:50, then pupils obviously can enter that registration period, they could get their present. Then pupils obviously can enter that registration period, they could get their present mark as the register is is called. Or they might get a late mark, which obviously reverts back to a present, an L code. Reverts back to a present mark as far as the attendance codes are concerned within that period of time. They may then be offered a further window, ten minute window from eight fifty till nine o'clock where they can still get an L code. But they have to obviously sign in through reception um to get that L code. Um. But after nine o'clock, if your register's opened at eight thirty, thirty minutes later, you need to close your registers at nine o'clock. After nine o'clock, any pupil who arrives after that time should get a U code unless you know. Why that pupil was coming in late, for example, they had a medical appointment, so you knew to expect them late and the M code would be the reason why they missed registration. Not anything else. Or if you have agreed as part of a reduced timetable or a part-time timetable for people to arrive in late. Then you would be using what will be um a C two code and I'll come on to that a little bit further down the line. Um, but. U code for all of the pupils who've basically turned up late with no prior knowledge or consent from yourselves to be able to do so. The penalty notices that are obviously being specifically requested for a single term time holiday where there's ten absences. That have all been consecutively recorded as a G code, um, those ones need to be really, really carefully recorded. So there's no gaps, there's no random U codes or anything else because obviously then that wouldn't be a, a single term time holiday. There needs to be ten consecutive G codes recorded for that type of penalty notice request coming through. If you're requesting a penalty notice for the mixture of an authorized absence, then those absences can be recorded either consecutively or cumulatively. Over that rolling ten school week period. Um, but as I say, it's got to be ten sessions and it's got to be within ten rolling school weeks. And we don't count any authorized absences as part of the national threshold. We won't take any legal action for any kind of unauthorized, for any kind of authorized absence, we just simply don't count it when we're looking at the referral paperwork that's come through. In terms of the new national threshold for legal intervention, the Working Together to Improve School Attendance Guidance requires all schools. As soon as that national threshold has been triggered, so ten sessions within ten school weeks. To consider whether it's appropriate to be requesting or issuing a penalty notice or to take alternative action. And it's paragraph one eighty within the updated guidance that makes that clear. What that, what that particular provision is, is essentially trying to to put in place is the removal of blanket policies across schools, across multi-academy trusts. So in terms of the issuing of penalty notices, the blanket policy approach is just not supported within the updated guidance. And essentially what the expectation is moving forward is that all decisions are going to be made on a case by case basis by schools. And that includes in relation to term time holiday requests, so that when you are looking at. Those pupils who've triggered that national threshold, you are using all the available information that's held about that family. When you're applying that use of discretion in terms of whether you want fines to be issued or whether or not actually you're going to go. Hard in on the support side of things because you understand that there are some vulnerabilities, some hardships potentially that that family are facing at the moment. That discretion that I'm alluding to has always been a key feature in terms of penalty notice provisions. Um, we know that some schools have moved away from applying the discretion, they've got zero tolerance policies in place in terms of term time holidays or. They don't ask for any kind of find in terms of term time holidays, but. Essentially, we need all schools from the nineteenth of August to move fully away from blanket policies. And you need to be making informed, well documented decisions for all of those cases. Um, and you're working together as part of that support first ethos with all partners. And you're applying everything that you know about that family in that decision-making that you're going to be making when that threshold has been met. In terms of the national threshold um and national framework, sorry for penalty notices. Penalty notices are going to be issued um for absences that are recorded after the nineteenth of August. At an increased rate under that new national framework. So the increased rate, the lower rate is eighty pounds. And it's the same timeframe, so zero to twenty one days for parents to pay. And that will then double to a hundred and sixty pounds. Parents will have between days twenty two and twenty eight to pay that increased a hundred and sixty pound rate. Those fines have been raised in line with inflation and as far as the the DFE were concerned, that was as far as they could take it. These fines haven't been um raised ever since they were introduced, so this is a bonus as far as 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 we're concerned that there is at least an increase happening. Fines are only going to be issued under that new national threshold for penalty notices. Um, where those ten sessions of unauthorized absence within ten rolling school weeks have been recorded. And really important for colleagues to understand and and obviously go through any of the paperwork that you've shared with parents previously, that the. Three-day, six-session penalty notice provision that we've had in place in Essex specifically. Um, is going to disappear from September twenty four, so you won't be able to ask for penalty notices for three days. Or six sessions of absence in those first two calendar weeks that I mentioned previously. So it is all going to be ten sessions of absence or more when we're going to be issuing penalty notices moving forward. Maximum limit um in terms of the number of penalty notices that we're going to be able to issue to each parent for each child is now going to be two within any rolling. Three-year period. So I told you that it was currently two within any twelve month period, so that's a significant change. What does that mean? It means that fine one, potentially if they've hit the national threshold, ten sessions of absence have been recorded, whether it's for a holiday or a combination of absence. Fine one could be issued to the parent at a rate of eighty pounds and it will increase obviously to a hundred and sixty if they choose not to pay. If then that same parent for that same child triggers that national threshold for a second time within that rolling three-year period. Then the fine will be issued, the second fine will be issued at a flat rate of a hundred and sixty pounds. That's intended as an increased deterrent factor, um, and that parent won't have the option to pay at the lower rate. So that's an, an additional escalation process. That the national framework for penalty notices brings with it. But really importantly for colleagues to understand is that there is simply no option for a third fine, i.e. penalty notice. Within that rolling three-year period. So it's just not going to be an option for any penalty notice. Uh, any, any penalty notice to be issued within that three-year period by any local authority. So penalty notices really need to only be issued to those parents who are believed to have allowed the absence or where they were in a position to prevent the absence. Obviously, if you've got multiple adults living within a home and and they've got either parental responsibility or day-to-day care and responsibility. Of that child and and you believe that those, those adults in that child's life have the ability to prevent those absences. Then you should be including those within any, any penalty notice requests that you put into the local authority. The rationale that's been put in place in terms of why there is now this national limit of two fines. Per parent, per child within any rolling three-year period is that there were examples when the DFE were talking to local authorities. Of local authorities issuing parents with, say, for example, four penalty notices within one term, one autumn term period. And as far as the DFE are concerned, if something isn't working or isn't having the desired effect. Then why would we continue to, to, to repeat that same course of action? So their questioning really was, well, why are you issuing four penalty notice fines to the same parent for the same child four times within. One autumn term period. So what they've done using this new national framework is they've removed. The ability for that sort of practice to be part of any local authorities' practice. They would like for local authorities and and schools to be thinking about. Alternative action and alternative legal response and and an escalation as essentially of of the response that parents are met with if they keep triggering the national threshold moving forward. Two parents um at the moment, under the current national framework, uh, look, so under the current local framework, would um for two children. Be fined a, a total of two hundred and forty pounds. So obviously sixty pounds per parent, per child. Um, would be two hundred and forty, the current local code of conduct and the current fine rate because the fines are increasing. Um, and if they went on a second um holiday or if they had triggered the, the, the threshold for a second time within that rolling three-year period. Then that, those parents would then have to factor in six hundred and forty pounds worth of fines. Because actually there is no lower rate um for them to pay at. So that, that's the added deterrent that's been built in. And that's what this slide is essentially trying to show you moving forward. I think as well, it's important for us to understand the impact that social media is having on this particular area of work. So there's an awful lot of encouragement between parents. Um, on websites like Momsnet, um Twitter, TikTok. Um, parents are essentially saying to each other, why don't you just remove your kids to home, educate them and then um go on your holiday and then try and slip them back into school. Um, the other thing that that parents are being told by other parents is, well, if, if you're going to only have two opportunities to go on a holiday. Where you'll be fined and if you go a third time, there won't be the option of a penalty notice, then why don't you go for longer? Why would you just go for five days? You might want to think about going for ten or fifteen days. So just be mindful of the impact of social media on that. And also mindful of the opportunity that we've got available because there's no expectation that you have to issue penalty notices. Obviously, the discretion lies with yourselves. But where we know that parents are trying to exploit the system or might be taking advantage or taking note of the advice that that's going on through social media. We might need to think differently and maybe think about prosecutions in those cases and we'll need to have conversations about that as and when those cases arise. In terms of statutory defenses, this slide is essentially there to, to help colleagues to understand that there are statutory. Statutory defenses that parents may seek to rely on. So if a parent um can prove that their child was prevented from attending school due to ill health. Um, or any other unavoidable cause, for example, exclusion, then they can't be held accountable for. Those absences if they've got the evidence to back that up. Also, if the school has granted that leave of absence, um, obviously that's a case by case um scenario, but if they can evidence that. Um, then if the alternative provision has essentially said it's okay for you not to come in on this particular day or for these particular days. Or if somebody in the school has done the same, then if they've got the evidence for that, parents aren't then held accountable and they're not liable, they've got a defence in law. If the absence that the pupil has recorded um was on a day that's set aside for religious observance and we know. As part of the system, education system, that the pupil's parents belonged to that particular religious body. Then the parents can't be held liable for having kept their children off school to be part of that religious observance. Um, and equally, if the local authority has got a duty to provide transport. To um that particular pupil to get them to school and and for some reason that failed on a particular day. Then essentially the parents have got a defence. It's not their fault, their child didn't attend school, the local authority didn't provide the transport that the pupil and the parents rely on. Therefore, that, that was the reason on that particular um day that those absences shouldn't have been unauthorized and actually should have been authorized. There are some additional provisions in there in terms of independent schools. So for those of you working in those particular settings, do familiarize yourselves. Also, um, those of you working in alternative provision settings where um the, the parent needs to obviously be aware that that's where they need to. Come to, 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 to receive their attendance and their marks. If it's alternative provision, the parents wasn't notified of that provision in writing and then the absence happens. Then the parent potentially may not be held liable, may have, have a defence in law because they didn't know that they had to send their child to a different place. And obviously, the, the last bullet point there is very much um linked to traveller children, young people. Where they have no fixed abode and where the parents are required to travel um as part of their trade or business. Um, then pupils are, are allowed to have additional absences, but there is also an expectation that those traveller pupils. Are attending school for at least two hundred sessions within any preceding twelve month period. Um, and that obviously includes the date on which those proceedings that my team might take um are instituted. Whilst we're on sorts of coding and defenses in law, I thought it was important for me to cover. Um, some of the big changes in coding practice that are going to come into play from the nineteenth of August. So the H code is not going to be available moving forward. So if you do believe that there are exceptional circumstances. Um, and you accept that the holiday or the absence that they are taking is due to an exceptional circumstance. Then you will be required to enter the C code, which essentially means that there are other authorized circumstances in play. The H code just won't be available for you moving forward. This table here is very specifically in relation to the Y code that is being broken down moving forward. Um, and the reason that this is in there is because actually the absences that might fall under codes Y one, Y seven. And Q relates specifically to transport and all of those potential codes may be possible defenses. So I'd just like you to be really clear that if the local authority provides transport and it just isn't available. Then Y one or Q could be available um in, and you need to be putting that into your registers for those particular dates. And obviously those can't then count as unauthorized absences, they don't count as unauthorized absences. Um, we wouldn't want to be taking any prosecution against parents if those um genuine defenses may apply. Um, and it's important that you obviously put the right codes in so that we're not then counting unauthorized absences that then may. Actually be eligible for the, for the new codes that are available. In terms of measures of register codes, one of the things that um it's really important for me to say at this point is that registers are essentially. Your way as a school of recording who is present in the building as that register is being called or taken in the morning. So where you've got pupils who aren't in the building, aren't present. There are then a, a series of absence codes that you are required to look at and pick the most appropriate code. Which accurately, accurately reflects the reason that pupil is believed not to have been in that registration when that register was being called. And that's what you have to then put into your registers, which are a legal document essentially. The DFE are already anticipating that overall attendance in schools is going to decline slightly because of the, the coding changes that are going to come into play. And they have issued updated advice as to how those um codes need to be used moving forward. Um, and the local authority has made some tables available that will, will help you to be able to, to apply that changed coding practice moving forward. Key things that we want you to be really mindful of is that if you're, as a school, permitting a pupil to arrive late. May, maybe because they've got reduced part-time timetable or because they've got specific send needs which warrant them coming in slightly later. Then those pupils are not going to be in registration, so you can't mark them. The present code for that session if you've let them come in late after your registers have closed. The new coding guidance has got a new breakdown of C code within it. And for those pupils who are, are on a reduced or a part-time timetable, where their absence from, from a registration needs to be recorded. It's the C two code that you'll need to be putting in. So that's an important one for colleagues to be aware of. Essentially, it's where you've got a compulsory school age pupil who's subject to a part-time timetable for whatever reason. It's an authorized absence, the C two code is what that reverts back to. And you can't use the L code because they're not late within that thirty minutes registration window that all schools have to have. And they're not U coded because it's not an unauthorized late. You know why that pupil's coming in late. You, you said it was okay for them to do so. So that's a really important coding change that you need to be aware of. Also, in terms of remote learning and online tuition that you might put in place for individual pupils. You're no longer in a position to be able to use the B code, which used to be supervised education off-site, um, was the way that that used to be termed. You are now required for remote learning and online tuition situations to use the C code. And that includes, for example, where the local authority has commissioned the online tuition. Um, for um putting in place some alternative provision for medical needs. The new K code can't be used for this purpose at the moment because the vast majority of the online tuition that, that pupils are receiving. Isn't at a place, it's an, it's an online provision, it's not physically supervised provision. Um, and it's not taking place at an alternative site, it's usually within the child's home. So the new K code can't be used if it's online tuition that the local authority has put in place or that a school has put in place. It's the C code that needs to go in for those types of provisions for those sorts of pupils. The thing I wanted to cover as part of this training session is, is, is the way in which schools may choose to reward. Good attendance or, or, or good um engagement with it, with, with their, with their education. So few facts, so any pupil under the new coding um arrangements moving forward. Who's on a part-time timetable which allows them to arrive late or leave early. Means that they're not going to be physically present in both registrations each day. Um, they might only be in one. Um, so it means they're never going to achieve a hundred percent attendance for that academic year, even if the part-time timetable arrangement is in place for six weeks or less. Um, they're going to have some C two codes recorded, which is an auth- um, going to go, go in as an authorized absence. So they're never going to get a hundred percent attendance. Similarly, any pupil who's got genuine medical needs, um, who need to go to regular medical appointments, for example. That might mean that they're not in school on a full-time basis and therefore they also won't achieve a one hundred percent attendance record for that academic year. Because they're going to have some I codes in the register or some M codes. Again, they revert back to authorized absence as far to, as fast as, as far as the registers are concerned. The other pupils that are going to be affected, obviously, are the ones I've just alluded to in terms of remote learning, online tuition, those who maybe are using an AV one robot. And not going to have a hundred percent attendance for that academic year moving forward because they can't be recorded as present. In the building during registration because they just weren't in the building. So they'll have a C code, which again is, is obviously an absence, authorized absence. So those sorts of pupils who've had these very specific supportive measures put in place to, to try and. Help them with their engagement are never going to be eligible for the good or excellent attendance rewards that you might be using as a school. So one of the things I wanted to take the opportunity to do as part of this training is just to encourage schools to think differently about how you might. Award or reward pupils who are engaging really well. Will, with the alternative education provision that you're putting in place, whether that be a part-time provision, whether that be reduced um late arrival, that kind of thing. Will with the alternative education provision that you're putting in place, whether that be a part time provision, whether that be reduced late arrival, that kind of thing. And one of the things I would urge schools to think about is how you might reward or acknowledge. Those pupils who are on those types of provisions, part time provisions, et cetera, who are engaging. One hundred percent with that provision, so they might not have a hundred percent attendance as far as the registers are concerned. But they are clearly showing that they are committed and engaged with their education offer, that they are, you know. Logging on when they need to, they're coming in when they're required to, even if that is a reduced provision. And doesn't give them a hundred percent attendance as far as the registers are concerned. But just think about how you're going to monitor those pupils who are engaging with those different provisions. And how you're going to acknowledge and reward them, so that they remain motivated to carry on engaging. And don't disengage because actually they just think, well, what's the point, I'm never going to have a hundred percent attendance, I'm never going to be. And receiving rewards for my good or excellent attendance because it's and it's not my fault because I'm on this provision. The new national framework that's coming into play. Also introduces a new document which is called a notice to improve. This is quite a significant document because essentially what it does is it it offers parents. And schools to to offer parents. One final opportunity for parents to engage with support before a penalty notice is issued. Now, at the moment, you use a legal action warning letter. And it's a dedicated template that we've provided. Moving forward, you will be required to use the dedicated notice to improve template, which is now available on Essex Schools info link for colleagues to. To make use of and put onto your letter headed paper. Don't veer away from this template, you will need to add information into the template, which obviously shows the support that you've been offering, what's still available. But the the key wording around the the legal risks. That parents are facing because this notice to improve has been issued. That mustn't be changed, you need to leave the template at the ears and just add in the information that you're required to add in. The difference with this new national notice to improve. Document is that it can only be used by schools. Where the national threshold for legal intervention has already been met, so essentially where ten sessions. Of unauthorised absence have already been recorded for that pupil in your registers. Within that ten rolling school week period, so unless the pupil has triggered. That ten sessions within ten rolling school weeks, you're not able to use the notice to improve. Under the new framework, so that's a difference to how the legal action warning letters that schools who who are using legal intervention would have been using moving. Uh in the past. At the moment, you can issue a legal action warning letter where there's only been two, three, four unauthorised absences recorded, so they've not actually. Hit any triggers for a penalty notice. Moving forward, the legal action warning letter won't be a document that we use. It'll be the notice to improve and you will only be using that where there are ten sessions. Of unauthorised absence recorded within a ten rolling school week period. The guidance says that if the national threshold has been met. And support is appropriate, but offers of that support either haven't been engaged with or they've not worked. The notice to improve should usually be sent to give parents a final chance to engage in support. So that's essentially indicating that this is a document that schools are going to be using fairly regularly. For those irregular school attendance cases where there's, you know, different absences on different days. The notice to improve is something that in the vast majority of cases, we would expect to see having been used. If you're not going to be using it for any particular case, then we are going to as a team, the attendance compliance team will want to understand the reasons why. And the sorts of examples that we might see if you are sharing reasons as to why you've not used that document, maybe that there was a term time holiday. So support first wasn't really an option for you, the parent basically put in a leave of absence request form. You didn't deem it appropriate or exceptional, therefore you're going to G code. You haven't really got much opportunity to offer support because in the vast majority of those cases, the holiday might have already been booked, so that's an example. If the notice to improve isn't believed to to potentially have any kind of impact on the behaviour of the pupil or the parents. You're going to need to evidence us to us why you think that's the case. And if you obviously use the notice to improve previously and it hasn't really had any desired effect, then that might be a reason why you say actually we're not going to use it in this particular case. So just be mindful of this particular document, do go familiarise yourselves with that document. Because it's one that you're going to have to use quite regularly moving forward. In terms of notices to improve, it is a say, it's a one last chance for the parents to engage. It must be used consistently across the whole local authority area. So the validity period that these documents are going to have is six weeks. And that decision was reached having consulted with colleagues in the eastern region. What we could see is that other local authorities were going with, in the vast majority of cases in the eastern region, six weeks as that period of time, so. It's a six week window for parents to engage with the offers of support. And that needs to be consistent across across the local authority. The notice to improve template has been shared already with schools. It was included in the pack went out following the virtual session that was held with this training session, it is now available on the Essex Schools info link. For schools to use if you weren't at that session. And there's clear warnings within that particular document about the potential for legal action if parents fail to engage with the offers of support. Or if there are any further unauthorised absences recorded. Schools will need to add, as I've said already, the list of support and stuff that you've already offered and the stuff that still remains available, the support that still remains available for parents. And you'll need to detail who the parent or the parents need to contact. If they wish to engage with the available support or discuss the attendance of their child. This is, as I've said already, an important letter within that new legal intervention process. And you must use the template that Essex County Council has provided. Where you're using this particular document, you need to have sent it to each relevant parent. And you need to make it really, really clear that you've got the evidence to show that each of the parents involved had received this particular document. And some further information about how you're going to communicate different letters and and things to schools moving forward later on in the slide pack. Just a a short note on suspension exclusion penalty notices, so. They're not subject to a fine increase, so they're going to carry on being issued at sixty pounds and a hundred and twenty pounds. We're going to still issue. Whether when those pupils are seen within a public place within the first five days of their exclusion or their suspension. At the moment, as a local authority, we issue. Very few of these types of penalty notices, although we did see an increase during this current academic year, twenty twenty three, twenty four. Parents need to have been notified of their legal responsibility to ensure that their their suspended or excluded child. Is not seen in a public place during those first five days of their suspension exclusion, and that needs to take place in writing. And verbally at the point of exclusion being communicated to those parents. If they don't know, they have to keep their child out of the public for the first five days, then potentially they could argue that they didn't know and therefore why they're receiving a penalty notice. And being held liable for something they weren't made aware of in terms of their parental responsibility. The penalty notices for suspension exclusions will not count towards the national framework, so I've already said that. We are as a local authority going to be be limited to only issuing two penalty notices. Per parent, per child within a rolling three year period. These suspended exclusion penalty notices don't count towards that limit. So it's only the term time holiday penalty notices or the irregular school attendance. Penalty notices where there's Gs, Us or O codes that count towards that limit. These can still be issued alongside those essentially, so we will continue to issue a maximum of two. Suspension or exclusion penalty notices per parent, per child within any given twelve month period. There's a dedicated online form for you to go to request these types of fines and we will ask specific questions on that form, so. Who in the school community cited that particular pupil, when, so we'll need the date and the time. Where were they, so were they outside the school gate at break time, lunchtime, were they in the town centre? You'll need to let us know exactly who, when. And where it was that they were actually seen in that public place within those first five days of that exclusion. It's already part of our existing penalty notice provisions and essentially in terms of the suspension exclusion penalty notices. What we're going to be doing is going to remain largely unchanged as we move into the new academic year. Terms of transition arrangement, so all of the clocks reset on the nineteenth of August. So for any absences that have been recorded in the current academic year, twenty twenty three, twenty four. The current local code of conduct will be applied, so the fine will be sixty pounds, a hundred and twenty pounds. And that will include all of those fines that we will still be issuing in September. For absences that have been recorded up until the end of this academic year. So any fines that are issued for absences before the nineteenth of August. Will not count towards the limit of two fines per parent, per child, so essentially. That two fine limit within the rolling three year period will only be met with fines that we issue. In the new academic year or beyond the new academic year. For absences that are recorded in the new academic year. So anything that's been recorded now in twenty twenty three, twenty four academic year. Will have the fines issued under the current soon to be extinct local code of conduct. And those fines that are issued before the nineteenth of August don't count towards the new. Limits, the new two within three rolling year. Limit that we're all going to have to work to moving forward. So that's what that next bullet point essentially covers. Any term time holidays that parents may have taken right up until the end of this academic year. You'll need to do as you've always done, which is to await the return mark. So when those pupils return to school in September and you can obviously then request penalty notices to be issued for those term time holidays that were taken. Right up until the end of this current academic year. But those fines will be issued under the old code of conduct as it will be then, sixty pounds, a hundred and twenty pounds fine rate. And those fines won't count towards the new national limits within the new national framework. And what we're going to be doing over the summer holidays, we're going to be reviewing all of the existing cases. Through the lens of the new national framework, so that we can be sure that when we list any of those cases for court consideration. That we we feel confident the support first is very strongly evidenced, even though we're not in that new national framework moving forward. The court dates for a lot of those cases that we've got in the system at the moment will all fall in the new academic year. And the courts are obviously being made aware of all of this new statutory guidance, so we need to be consistent that what we're presenting. Before the court in the new academic year, the evidence behind all of those cases is consistent. Hence the the review of what we've got in front of us at the moment. Any requests for penalty notices, this is old information really, so we did have a deadline that was put in place. Finally, the fifth of July was put in place, the deadline for any new referrals for irregular school attendance. Or direct prosecutions, that that deadline has come and passed now. And we obviously want to thank schools for for adhering to that. And understanding that we do need that period of time to review the cases that we've already got in the system. In terms of the penalty notice code of conduct. There's always been a requirement for local authorities to have a locally published code of conduct, which doesn't actually change, even though the criteria within it is the national. Framework and the national threshold, we still have to publish a local code of conduct so that. All of our schools and all of our parents have got that document to refer to. That has been put together. And the updated version has been published on the Essex County Council website since the fifth of June. The link within these slides obviously will take you to that updated version. And it is put onto the website alongside the current local version at the moment because obviously the. The new version that will apply from the nineteenth of August would only apply for new absences, so we need to make sure that parents are aware of. The consequences depending on when their absences were recorded for their child. We were ahead of the game in publishing that on the fifth of June, there were quite a few local authorities who were still getting their. Updated codes of conduct through various red tape. So we tried to move really quickly on making sure that we had that document ready and published so that schools and parents could refer to it sooner rather than later and manage expectations. As quickly as possible. There is a a dedicated discretion statement within the updated code of conduct. Which essentially says that all schools have got to consider whether a penalty notice is appropriate for each individual case. Where that national threshold has been met. And we don't want any blanket positions in terms of issuing or not issuing penalty notices. That those judgments need to be made on an individual case by case basis. To ensure that there's fairness and consistency across the country. And the bold print is essentially the bit that I want you to be really aware of. Is that Essex County Council, within their published code of conduct, supports all head teachers within Essex to exercise their discretion. When considering the appropriateness of penalty notice fines. And that that appropriateness needs to basically be based on their knowledge of individual family circumstances within their school community. From the nineteenth of August, the local authority is going to need to be in agreement. Before any penalty notice may be issued under that published code of conduct. And that's a provision that I just want to draw to the attention of many schools who commission. The the services of any of our local accredited company partners. Who have previously been able to issue any penalty notices under the code of conduct without first seeking the local authority's prior agreement. That's quite a significant change in Essex, so. Any companies that are issuing penalty notices under the code of conduct. Will first need to check with the local authority whether we are in agreement with those penalty notices being issued. And as part of that review process that we'll be doing at the local authority, we'll be checking that the pre referral support first evidence. Is in line with what we're going to be expecting other schools to be doing if they don't commission those services, so it's in the interest of consistency essentially. It's important that colleagues understand that although there's a national framework, there's a national threshold. Doesn't mean that schools have got to go back to square one when they're thinking about legal action in any given case. There's absolutely no expectation that penalty notices have got to be used before prosecution is going to be considered by my team. But we will need to have a clear rationale as to why you're not, why why we're not. Going down the penalty notice route or why a prosecution is being requested. So we need to understand why it is that the the level of support that's been offered warrants. The type of legal intervention that schools are wanting us to to take forward. But if there's no previous penalty notice, we just want to understand why you think of direct prosecution as the course of action that might actually have the desired effect. Similarly, where schools request a penalty notice, but we look at our records and we can see we've already done that. We've already issued penalty notice fines or we've possibly already prosecuted that particular parent, either for the same child or a previous. Child within the family or sibling within the family. We may well come back to you as a team to say. Do you still want a penalty notice, we've probably got enough evidence. And intelligence about the family which would support us possibly switching that request to a prosecution request. So we may well come back to you and just share the intelligence that we hold and and just check that the course of action that you're asking for. Is the one that you want us to go down, because it may be that our evidence tells us that we could escalate in a different direction if you're in support of that. Penalty notices as as far as the new guidance is concerned are seen to be an out of court settlement opportunity for parents. And where we do go down the prosecution route, it's really important that colleagues understand that. Parents potentially are going to receive a criminal record. If they're found guilty by the magistrates, then their future DBS certificate will show that they've failed to secure a child's education. So just be really careful, and that's where the discretion element really kicks in is. Do you think parents should have the opportunity to to go down the out of court settlement? If if not, then do you think prosecution is appropriate? Would you be happy with the family and the parents having a criminal record? With that potentially impacting on job prospect moving forward? There are the sorts of considerations as well that you need to factor into that discretion element that you have for all cases. Sometimes legal action, it's fair to say, will simply not be deemed an appropriate course of action. And ultimately, as far as the updated guidance is concerned, the updated statutory guidance is concerned, the local authority. So in in our situation, it will be the attendance compliance team. Have the final say as to whether or not we will pursue legal action, either penalty notice or prosecution or not. But there are going to be some cases where it just isn't appropriate, where the intelligence held shows extreme vulnerability. There was a lot going on in terms of support or that needs to happen before. Anybody could ever come anywhere near any kind of assumption that a prosecutorial penalty notice is the right way forward for any given family. If you're not sure whether or not a case is suitable for legal intervention. One of the things that the attendance compliance team will be introducing is the ability for school colleagues to book a ten minute. Legal intervention drop in session consultation. We've not quite decided on what we're going to name those. And what that will provide is an opportunity for you to talk to one of our attendance compliance officers. And talk the case through, tell us what you've already got in terms of information and and support first evidence. So that we can then give you some informed advice as to the best course of action. And we will be sharing some more advice as to how you can book into those sessions as we've got that system set up over the summer break. In terms of pre referral evidence, I did say one of the aims of this particular session is to help colleagues to understand what is meant by support first. And there are some very revised expectations in terms of pre referral evidence that these next few slides are going to cover. So in order to access statutory legal intervention, record keeping is going to be one of the most crucial things that you need to be mindful of as a school moving forward. Really important for all of our school based colleagues to understand that if you're going to show whole school approach in terms of support first. Then collation of that support first evidence is going to be possibly. Something that is contributed to by lots of different people, lots of different members of staff within the school. And I think it's really important that your systems for record keeping are reviewed really carefully. To make sure that everything that you are doing to support people to be in school more regularly is being recorded. All those slight changes, all those slight reasonable adjustments. They need to be recorded from the outset so that your support first journey is very well documented for every individual case. You need to have a robust system in place to capture everything that's being done by all the different staff that might be involved. All the early stuff that's going on, so that if then it's an ongoing absence concern. And it then is escalated to more senior staff becoming involved potentially in the follow up of that. That you can evidence all of that support that's gone in to improve that attendance. And why things moved in a particular direction in terms of escalation. One of the things that I can't stress enough that there should be is that there should be no one size fits all approach to tackling attendance and absence concerns, so. You need to be quite bespoke in what you're doing. Bearing in mind the specific needs of the pupil or the family or both. There needs to be a move away from letter one being issued at this point in a process, letter two going out at that, that particular threshold having been met, et cetera. Actually more of a move towards just doing what you can read from the situation is going to be the possible thing that might actually affect some change in that pupil's attendance at school. One of the things I would like to sort of give it as an example is that my, my daughter attends a secondary school. We receive emails regularly to say that if you've got any concerns as a parent about your child's attendance, then the first port of call would be the form tutor. And I keep finding myself thinking, well, if I did have to contact my daughter's school to say she's struggling a little bit in the mornings to get in, or I can sort of sense that she's got a bit of reluctance that's kicking in, maybe she's had a falling out with somebody in the tutor group. If I call the form tutor or I email the form tutor to say, just want to bring this to your attention, just want to see what support potentially you can offer to my child. Whatever that form tutor does, whether that be a change of seating plan in the form group or just have a conversation with the two, with the two youngsters together, that needs to be documented somewhere. That shouldn't just be an isolated course of support that that form tutor puts in place. They need to log that they had a call from me as the parent. And as a result of the information that I shared, a, a supportive measure was put in place, whatever that looks like, that needs to be logged somewhere. So that's where this record keeping message is really coming from is what systems have you got in place to allow for that level of recording of teeny tiny little things that might be happening that might actually start to capture the support that you as a school are willing to put in place for pupils who may be struggling to or thinking about struggling to come into school on a regular basis. In terms of meetings, I think like that, that you might be arranging with parents, just think carefully about when you're calling parents in. If you are, because of staff availability, offering the same day and the same time each time for each meeting and the parent isn't engaging with that, is that evidence that you are being flexible and supportive in your approach with those particular parents? It may well be that if you offer, for example, Tuesday morning, nine o'clock, every time you're offering a meeting to a particular parent, and we see that in the pre-referral evidence, that the parents were invited in for multiple meeting, great, tick in the box, they've had multiple opportunities to come in and engage with support, but they've chosen not to. But then we kind of delve a bit deeper and we can see, well, those multiple opportunities have been the same time on the same day. Our line of questioning in my, in our minds at the local authority will be, well, could there be a particular reason why that day and that time doesn't work? And for a particular parent, it might be that nine o'clock on a Tuesday morning just doesn't work because they've got other children that need to get to a different school. And they could just never make that nine o'clock time. Obviously, there's an expectation for parents to contact you to talk that through with you. But there is also an expectation for that flexibility from a school's perspective in, in being mindful of the, the specific circumstances which might prevent a parent from coming in on a particular date and time and offering alternatives. And those alternatives may well be potentially offering things like virtual meetings, maybe a home visit in rare circumstances, or even offering to meet with families at a neutral venue, one where they feel comfortable, where they're not on their territory, they're not on your territory, but they're meeting with you and they're engaging with you. Because as far as I'm concerned, and as far as my team will be concerned, any alternative offers of engagement and ability for parents to engage with you are positives. And it may well save some time later on down the line. And really importantly, as part of that record keeping is that all the communications, all of those engagement opportunities, any slight reasonable adjustments or even major reasonable adjustments that you are making to support that pupil to be in school more regularly, all of that support strategy, any discussions that are being had with outside agencies or the tenant specialist team that are quadrant based. They all need to be clearly and consistently logged by everybody that's involved in that process so that it all forms part of that support first evidence moving forward. So if I've not driven home hard the message, the focus is very much on record keeping legally. If it isn't written down, then as far as my team are concerned, it didn't happen. So you need to send copies of notes from all key discussions to parents so that they know they were involved in this conversation, these were the notes that you made, these were the action points that were agreed, et cetera, et cetera. So do be very clear and very consistent in writing things down, logging things and sharing those notes with all the relevant parties that need to have a copy. Be aware of things like file disclosures. So my team will contact you in regards to a file disclosure where a parent chooses to plead not guilty and where a matter is then proceeding to trial. If you wouldn't say something directly to a parent, please do not write it down. Because that potentially as part of the file disclosure exercise will need to be put into the pack. And any written records need to be disclosed as part of the evidence that's held in any given case. So just think carefully about your internal communications with colleagues. Sometimes even your external communication with colleagues and other teams. Be very professional in what you're writing in those written communications, whoever you're sending them to. Because they may well form part of the file disclosure that then goes to the parent and they will see what you've been saying, what you've been intimating about their children. So keep it professional at all times is the message there. We may well have to exhibit your work within our legal pack. So just think all the time that you need to be painting a picture that the way that you've tried to support and engage this family has been really positive, that you can't understand why it's led to legal action, that you've worked so hard with the family to resolve those attendance concerns, that legal action is absolutely being requested as a last resort for that particular case. As I've said already, everybody that's working with the pupil, the family needs to be recording their involvement, whether that's positive engagement or not. That also needs to be recorded. So if you've invited them in for a meeting and they turn up, great, log that. But equally, if they don't turn up, you need to log that they were invited and they chose not to attend. Because that's equally important, support first evidence moving forward in terms of those engagement opportunities. We cannot as a team use evidence from any meetings that have been held with a child where there's no adult present to support the pupil. So just be very mindful of that, that we won't be using any evidence that's been gathered as a meeting with, during a meeting that's been held with a particular pupil. In terms of the revised expectations that are within the updated guidance, it makes it really, really clear within the updated working together to improve school attendance guidance, that every school must have a named senior attendance champion. And that that named senior attendance champion needs to be named within the published attendance policy that each school should have published on their website. You should also alongside the senior attendance champion's name, have the name of the day to day contact that parents would need to call if they've got any concerns about their child attendance. If that's a different person to the senior attendance champion, obviously. And the attendance policy must make clear that if they don't engage, parents might obviously face legal consequences. I need to kind of stipulate what those consequences will be. There is a model attendance policy that's available for schools to use. It's actually located on the Essex Primary Heads Association, the EFA website. But a link to that has also been put onto Essex Schools info link. So one way or another, we would urge you to have a little look at that. But also to make sure that not only having it published online is an opportunity, an option for parents, that also you have some hard copies available within your school office for those parents who may not find accessing something online accessible. If they've got a hard copy and maybe they struggle to understand it, at least try to show that to somebody who could talk them through it. One of the things I would say is that actually if you've got parents coming in for meetings, have the attendance policy in front of you, just guide them towards the relevant part that you're working on. But there should be no situations moving forward where any attendance officer is working in isolation to improve a pupil's attendance on roll. And actually, one of the things that the senior attendance champion needs to be thinking about is working together, making sure that that's being facilitated internally between school attendance colleagues, but also externally with wider partners as well. And there needs to be regular communication facilitated between those key internal colleagues. I'm suggesting that that, that needs to be weekly, at the very least fortnightly, regular communication between those internal colleagues. And I think it's the role of the attendant, senior attendance champion to make sure that they're facilitating that regular contact between maybe the attendance officer, the SENCO, the designated safeguarding lead and any other colleagues, including if you do use accredited companies, including those colleagues who are dealing with those cases, following up on those absence concerns as an accredited company. They need to be drawn into these conversations because actually what you will all need internally is an insight into which pupils are causing the concerns and who is going to be the one that's taking the lead out of all of those internal colleagues in addressing those concerns so that you can avoid things like duplication, the parents having to say things twice to different people. But it then is very good evidence of whole school coordinated approaches. And it just means that although there might be multiple people who've got concerns about that pupil's attendance, but it's really clear who it is in the system that is working with those parents to try and remove those barriers to irregular, to regular school attendance. Attendance action plans and parenting contracts, as you may well be familiar with, calling them at this time, are going to be known as attendance contracts moving forward. And that's what the guidance has renamed them. The guidance supports the use of action plans absolutely moving forward. But one of the things that it has brought into place is the fact that professionals can no longer, under the new way of working, agree an action plan or attendance contract where the parents aren't present at the meeting. So essentially what this, this change brings is the inability now for schools to be able to devise an action plan attendance contract in the absence of the parents and then just send it out to them. And we know that that is practice that has been in play for quite a while. But one of the things that the, the guidance has made clear is that those sorts of plans of action attendance contracts shouldn't be put in place if the parent has failed to attend a meeting. And they certainly shouldn't be something that the professionals are agreeing between themselves and then pinging out via email or post to parents. That practice is no longer supported under the new ways of working under the statutory guidance that comes into play. If parents fail to engage in meetings, then as I've said already, log their failure to engage. My team will see them if they, if they fail to engage all the time, parents obviously are then unlikely to have entered into any kind of attendance contract because they weren't there to have that devised and put in place. So we'll be able to see that clearly if you are logging all of the failed engagement opportunities in the way that we're hoping you will be doing moving forward. And we won't be using any, we won't expect any use of action plans and attendance contracts if they've been serious non-engagement all the way through. All of your letters, emails, meeting invites, meeting notes, review meeting notes, action plans, attendance contracts need to be properly addressed to parents if you're sending them to them and stored so that they may be shared as part of that pre-referral evidence. So we're going to need to know who's had them essentially. That's what that point is, is trying to drive home. And eventually, if you do end up coming to us as a last resort and you send in a referral to us, we will need to see who was involved, who was invited, who intended, who attended, who received emails following those interactions and those engagements, who didn't attend, what did you do when they didn't attend, how did you address that? All of that audit trail essentially needs to be logged in a way that when it comes through as pre-referral evidence, we will be able to see exactly who was involved. And when you are sending letters, potentially you might scan them in, rename them in your system as the date and who, you know, the child name and what the letter is, who went to. Because one of the things that we do see when pre-referral evidence is coming through is documents coming through and the file name is the scanned document number or document one, document two, that's what they've been named as. Not helpful to my team and certainly not efficient use of my team's time. And certainly one of the things that we may well do moving forward is decline referrals where there are lots of attachments. And in order for us to understand what's in those attachments, we have to open every single one individually and match it to something that you have said within your chronology. So you are required to, moving forward, label any attachment that come into my team really clearly so that we know what it actually is before we've actually opened it. Any telephone contacts or email contacts that you're having with local authority colleagues, so you may well be in liaison with SEND colleagues, the education access team, the attendance specialist teams, any contacts that you're having with those, they will also need to be logged. Who was involved? Who did you speak with? What advice did they give you? What did you do with that advice? How did you action it moving forward? They're all parts of that support first audit trail logging that you'll need to have in place moving forward. The Let's Talk With Issue document, that's been around now for a little while. One of the things that my team will be looking to see is whether or not that document has been used. And if so, what was the outcome? What was the, you know, when you, when you put all the evidence in to the tool that you have available, what was the outcome? What did it then advise you to do to support those pupils to be back in school? One of the things that you will be asked outright moving forward is, if you've not used the Let's Talk With Issue document, please explain why. We'll want to understand why you're not using that part of the toolkit that Essex County Council has made available for schools to use. Colleagues may, should also be aware that there is the availability of early help droppings across the county. There's one per quadrant of Essex each week. It's a one hour slot, same hour each week. So you can get into the routine of knowing when it is and dropping in if you've got any cases. Pupils who are causing concern, you wouldn't raise them by name, but you would raise the scenario. And then you would be able to access through the early help drop in advice from a multiple number, multitude of different professionals from all sorts of different teams who will be able to say whether or not they believe there's a role for their team in supporting or improving the attendance of that particular child. One of the things that's changed in terms of practices is that colleagues are invited to attend any of the early help drop in. So if the one in your quadrant doesn't quite work with your timetable, one that you can't actually attend, you are welcome to join any early help drop in across the county to raise your case and take advice from that particular forum. And again, one of the things that my team will be looking to, to be able to understand is if you haven't raised a case at the forum, we'd like to understand why you didn't take the opportunity in the early stages, and I have highlighted the word early on purpose, to take advice from professionals in terms of the early help offer that might be available to prevent things from snowballing into quite a lot of persistent absence or even worse still, the severe absence category. Another one of the things that we'd like to be considering is whether or not a team around the family meeting needs to be held. When did that meeting take place? Who did you invite to those meetings? If there's no TAF that's been held for a particular family or particular child, we want to understand again why you've chosen not to do that. And one of the things that we're obviously going to be stressing is that you arrange those team around the families early as part of your support first process, not when attendance is already close to or within the severe absence threshold, which unfortunately is practice that we have seen in recent academic years. So if you're going to hold a TAF, excuse me, the expectation is that you would hold that TAF fairly early on in the process. And when you're thinking about TAFs, are there any other siblings on roll at other school where their attendance is also potentially a concern or the attendance of all of the children within the family or potentially a safeguarding issue? GDPR is absolutely irrelevant in terms of you liaising with other schools to check whether or not the absence concerns you hold for pupil are mirrored or are emerging patterns with other pupils who are siblings of the child on your school roll. And one of the things I would suggest that schools try to do more regularly is that if you are holding a TAF, you try to coordinate your diaries and you hold a joint TAF. Because actually from a family's perspective, they will see really clearly that you are as schools joining forces to support them to address the attendance concerns that are held for different children within the family. And that might be quite a positive joint forces experience for the family to see that actually everybody is is trying to rally around and support the family to get back to a position where there's going to be no threats of legal action moving forward because they've actually got their act together and the pupils are attending more regularly. One of the things that we are also going to be asking for specifically is whether or not the senior attendance champion, SENCO, the designated safeguarding lead are all aware of each referral that's being made for legal action. And this is to address that practice where we know that sometimes up until now, attendance officers might have been working in isolation. We need to know that the support that, that, that needs to be in place for each referral is absolutely there across the board in school. And that everybody's in agreement that actually the, the referral for legal action, whether that's penalty notice or a prosecution is seen by all relevant colleagues to be both appropriate and likely to affect change and that nobody yet in the school has still got something up their sleeve that they're going to try with that family before they would be looking for legal action. So that's an important thing that you're going to need to be checking internally before you hit submit on those referrals, that all of those colleagues are fully in support of you making that referral because you genuinely all believe internally you've exhausted all of the legal support first stuff that you can do. We also will have in place for the start of the new academic year, a new online referral form, which will ask some of these questions specifically. It will give you the opportunity to upload that relevant pre-referral evidence in, in a format that means that we'll be able to fully understand what you've done in terms of support first. It's going to prompt all of those questions about have you held a TAF, have you been to the early help drop in? You're going to obviously need to have all that information available. The, the hope is that you'll be able to obviously submit those referrals and be able to come back and save more stuff into them later on down the line. So hopefully it'll become a work in progress type document, but you'll be able to familiarise yourselves with those online forms when we, when we hit the start of the new academic year. We'll be working on them and finalizing them during the school closure period. After submitting a referral to us, this obviously links back to the concerns that are raised in terms of the communication, the fact that we will continually be reviewing, reviewing those cases. You do need to keep us informed about any significant changes. So I'm going to just reiterate any change of family address, any change in the pupil's living arrangements, maybe when you made the referral, they were living with dad, but they've now moved back to live with mum or vice versa. We need to know about those changes in living arrangements for individual pupils. And if there's any obviously involvement of any other teams or services, we need to know if you've made a child who's A child who's been referred for legal action, the subject of a reduced or part-time timetable, or they've got some alternative provision on there. On their um plan now, or they're now doing some remote learning. Again, we would expect you to let us know about those changes. Um. And you need to keep us updated throughout the time that we're involved whilst we've got a case open. If any parents choose to remove their children to be home educated, please can you make sure that you are the ones that alert us to that? So that we understand that there's been that change in circumstance. That doesn't necessarily mean that we will that will withdraw the case on the legal. Um. Situation that we're we're moving forward on because ultimately these are strict liability offences. By the time you've made the referral into my team, the parent has already committed the offence because the absences have already been recorded. They've already been, they've already been coded as unauthorised. So actually, just because they've removed to home educate doesn't mean that we're going to withdraw our legal action. But we do need to know about that change in circumstances as soon as possible. Also, one of the things that we want you to be mindful of is sometimes information may come to light, the parents might start to engage with you. Attendance starts to improve. That might change your mindset as to whether or not you still want us as a local authority to pursue legal action. So again. I'm going to urge you now to make sure that you keep us informed of any change in circumstances or change in mindset. That are affecting those specific cases that have already been referred into my team. If you've failed to share updates, and I'm going to be really outright here. You are risking potentially us withdrawing those cases by not giving us those updates. You are undermining our work, you're undermining our decision-making in individual cases. We have to be sure that we are acting and we're making our decisions based on all available information that we've got available, that you have available too. And that when we're sending legal correspondence out to families, that we're sending that to the correct address. So please make sure that you keep us informed of those changes so that we can do what we need to do to keep those cases risk-free. Um. And certainly uh away from the risk of being withdrawn because we've got all the information that we need to be able to make informed decisions all the way through that process. My team have a duty to continually review those cases up to and including the court date. So if you become aware of any information that might, you know, if we become aware of any information which might impede. A successful prosecution or it means that prosecution doesn't really feel like it's an appropriate course of action. Maybe there's a vulnerability that's been. Brought to light that we think actually this is just not an appropriate course of action, being punitive at this time. Might be seen to be quite a detrimental approach, bearing in mind that support might need to be further exhausted. Then we can withdraw and we can close those cases um right up until that court date with no further action. So just be mindful of that. So keep us updated of the information that you hold. If we decline a referral that you're submitting to us moving forward, um. Obviously, try and avoid um any declines by speaking to the team. Obviously, I've alluded to the fact that we are going to be holding those 10 minute. Drop-ins for you to talk directly to an attendance compliance officer so that you can check before you hit submit on those referrals. That's hopefully going to uh help us all to avoid any declined referrals moving forward. But if we're going to be looking at these cases from a renewed lens, obviously looking for clear evidence of support first. One of the things that we may well, as we're going through that pre-referral evidence, is identify that there are some strategies that we would have thought. You would have used and we may well come back to you with recommendations as to what we think could be done in addition. So that you can go go back, we're declining the referral, we're not going to take legal action at this moment in time, but here are some more things. That we didn't see in the pre-referral evidence that we would have expected to see and that we would ask that you maybe revisit now. As support strategies moving forward. What we obviously want to do is be able to see that all of us are only taking legal action. Placing cases before the magistrate's court where that's an absolute last resort after everything's been done in terms of support first. Once we've obviously given recommendations to yourselves and once you've actioned those recommendations, we will of course be glad. To review any updated pre-referral evidence that you've got with the additional audit trail to show. What you've done differently, what additional stuff you've done to address those absences, and we'll consider those and reconsider those um submissions as and when you've got that evidence available. These changes, these next few slides talk about changes to communications to parents. So um. One of the things that we are going to be looking at is is giving you some updated advice on how you can communicate things. But I want you to be really mindful of. What you are saying to parents when you're trying to support them to improve their child's attendance at school. Um. And how, for as long as possible, when you are contacting parents about your concerns around their children's attendance. The wording of your communications, whether they're verbal or writing, whether they're by email, whether they're by letter. Should be as soft and supportive and non-threatening as possible. Um. Because actually, that's how you're going to get the best possible engagement. You need to be thinking about listening, understanding, empathising and supporting, but also always underlying what you're saying. Saying that you're not going to just sit back and tolerate the absence rates that your child, their child is having recorded. So it's about getting that balance right. In helping parents to understand that, oh gosh, they've they've cottoned on to the fact that you're not attending regularly, they're concerned about your attendance. They want to work with me, they being the school, want to work with me, me being the parent. And therefore I'm going to engage with these offers of support in the hope that it's going to make you, child, pupil. Attend school more regularly and and hopefully avoid legal action being taken by them, the local authority, uh moving forward. Some of the letters that we sometimes see coming through with evidence um currently. Doesn't necessarily move in line with the support first approach. So. We've sometimes seen legal action being threatened really early on where there's been no threshold met in terms of legal intervention. So there's some of the things that we want to be removed from practice moving forward so that we can be confident and support versus at the heart of everything that that people are doing. Obviously, when we see those threats of early legal intervention or slightly harshly worded less letters really early on. That could potentially be causing parents to lose interest and disengage with the offers of support. So what we obviously want is for the wording and the language to really support parents to feel able to. Choose to work with the school and know that support is the approach that's going to be taken. We want letters and emails to parents to raise concerns absolutely, but obviously then off the back of that say that we want to listen. And understand and help to remove the barriers that might have caused those concerns in the first place. We'd like you to be obviously providing accurate contact details to the parents. So that they know exactly who in school they need to be contacting to talk things through, to meet with. Who is it in school that's going to help the parents to remove those barriers to those children and those pupils being in school regularly? Think about offering alternative ways for parents to engage. So. Talk things through on the telephone, but keep very clear logs as to what's being talked about, what actions might be agreed. What reasonable adjustments might be made as a result of those telephone calls. Similarly, you might want to do virtual video calls. Or have in-person meetings, either in school or at home. The key really is going to be about early engagement being carried out as creatively as possible. So that you've got some engagement rather than none, and the language and 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 the approach really supports that early engagement to to. To prevent things from from snowballing. Use of the right supportive language, um. Putting a little bit of additional resource in in these early stages should hopefully, in the vast majority of cases. Reduce the number of of formal interventions and needs for multiple meetings and requests for legal intervention. I'd like colleagues to think carefully about trying to to be in the mindset where actually. Wouldn't it be a really good thing to be able to report to whoever's asking, governors, Ofsted, whoever is asking, senior attendance champion? That as as the people that are responsible for monitoring attendance, you identified. X number of pupils whose attendance was starting to become a cause for concern. And that through your support first approach, the vast majority. Were resolved without the need for legal intervention. That should be the approach that you are taking. So. Everything support first should be about gathering um the momentum in school to support pupils. Logging it as an audit trail so there's evidence available of all of that, but ultimately the evidence should point to successful. Returns to regular attendance at school rather than. Successful referrals to the local authority for legal intervention. That's not going to be. The way that you are going to be judged on your success ultimately moving forward. Actually, if you can get support first right. Then pupils are going to return to regular patterns of attendance without the need for legal intervention at the last resort. The last resort will then be held back for. The minimum rare circumstances where you've exhausted everything, parents either did engagement, didn't work, or they they didn't engage at all. That's where we'd like to see the legal intervention happening. Whole school approach obviously needs to be something that's at the heart of all of that. And one of the things I'd like to urge colleagues to do is think about the perception of your school through the eyes of the parent community. So when you're offering parents in-person meetings in school. Are you only really offering those meetings because of something negative you want to report? So, you know, are you concerned about the pupil's behaviour or? Their attendance? Is that the only time that you invite parents into school? Or negative meetings about negative concerns that you might have? Think about what perception that's going to give the parent if that's the only time they see themselves being invited in. But equally, think about those parents who've got pupils who are attending really well, who are behaving really well. What perception are you giving to those parents about how open and inviting your school environment actually is for the parent part of your school school community? So do parents have opportunities to see what life is like for their child in your school? Because if they don't, if they don't have the opportunities to be in school when the pupils are all there and enjoying life in school. Then they're going to take their their child's version of events as gospel and they're going to almost assume that what their child is saying about. Oh, you know, the the teachers don't care about us or um they're not very welcoming. That's what the parents are going to hear and they're not going to have an opportunity to be able to rebut that just for want of a a legal term. And turn around and say, that's not true, because I've been in your school and I've seen how welcoming staff are. I've watched them at the gate where they've said. Welcome everybody, have a good day. Um. That's the kind of. Information that you want parents to have at their back of their mind when they're listening to their pupils' gripes about being in school. So they can turn around and almost say, you sure about that? Because that's not what I've seen when I've been in school. But if parents haven't been in school, they can't obviously offer offer that kind of of retaliation. And the other thing I'm going to just kind of raise as part of this slide is virtual parents' evenings. As a parent who has been subject to virtual parents' evening ever since the pandemic. And they do carry on in many schools. I understand why schools have retained that as their practice. So I know that they are more efficient. Obviously, the counter is on in the corner, they count down. The the meeting essentially ends when that counter has got to the end. So you haven't got the backlog, you haven't got those delayed. Very long parents' evenings in in school, whereas in in person. But if you are using things like virtual parents' evenings, that's yet another opportunity that parents of good children, as well as those who aren't so good. Aren't able to come into school to see their children's work being displayed on on display boards, to meet with parents face to face. So think about other opportunities that you could offer, maybe where there's sports fixtures or where you've got. Um. Whole school or whole year group events where the form groups are pitted against each other. Could you invite parents, if you've got the space available for outdoor events, for example, to come along and watch and cheer on their their child's tutor group, for example? I'm just trying to help you to understand that bringing parents in. Might actually help them to see how great a school you have um and how safe, how welcome, how. Um. Included their children should feel when they're in school with you. In terms of communication, I've been alluding to this sort of along the way really. There's going to be some quite significant changed advice in terms of how you are going to communicate to parents and which letters are going to be mandatory. In the processes moving forward. So the current advice that those of you who've been working attendance will be aware of. Is that all important letters, especially those that have got any kind of warning about potential legal action, must be sent via Royal Mail First Class Post. And I know, because I've heard it, you tell me regularly, every opportunity you get, that that has meant huge cost implications for schools because. Sending one letter per parent, per child by Royal Mail First Class Post adds up pretty quickly, particularly if you are a large school. With lots of persistent absentees, severe absentees, or lots of holidays during term time taking place. So I've definitely heard that advice and I'm hoping that what you're going to hear from me now is going to help you to see that we have really taken that on board. So the new advice moving forward is that you are able to secure um. Written consent from each parent, their agreement for all the informal and formal school-to-school correspondence to be sent to them by email. Then that's going to be considered acceptable evidence moving forward. So essentially, moving forward, you can send. Meeting invites, copies of meeting notes, responses to holiday requests, the notice to improve important document that I've already um talked about. That you must be able to share copies of those with us via email. Um. But tell us that you have shared them via email as well. You need to have a robust system in place. Obviously, this all alludes back to the record keeping so that you can produce any emails, including any attachments within them. As part of any evidence that you share with us as a local authority for those cases where statutory legal intervention becomes um necessary. One of the important caveats that I want to obviously make clear is that you need to be really sure. That you are sending any emails to parents to their individual email address. Um. And that it's definitely their email address. So don't send. The same email copied into different parents, send them individually to each parent. And don't send them to what look like family shared email addresses. So. My elective home education officers quite often are asked to send emails to emails at thesmithfamily@gmail.com. What we know about that particular email type is that possibly it's a shared email address that the the children and the parents are each accessing. So we would definitely say that if you are sending any important letters, meeting invites, all of those types of things to parents about attendance concerns. Do not send them to a family email address because of the chance, like with post. That the children might intercept and they might delete those emails um and the parents might not receive them. So that's where that caveat has been added in. You are also able to hand letters directly to parents, so that's going to be acceptable moving forward. And one of the things that we'd like to be able to do is to evidence which letter was handed to which parent, who in the school gave it. Um. There's going to be a template that's going to obviously help you to understand what you need to log. In the vast majority of cases, we would expect to log it maybe on your management information system, so your SIM system or your ARBA system, whichever system you're choosing to use. So we'd need to be able to see which date, which time, which parent and which person gave which letter. Um. Which relates to the the process that you're wanting to obviously um. Share with us um in terms of support first. There is going to be an expectation that, one of the offices have said already, the legal action warning letter is going to disappear from the process moving forward. So we don't want you to use. A letter before the threshold has already been met. So this obviously is very much about you being supported to not use threats of legal action. We want you to support first um and be very soft in your language. Um. And what we want obviously is for parents to feel able to engage with that support before any threats of legal action are being made. Um. And one of the things that we obviously want you to do is to make sure that it's really clear. That any requests for leave time, leave during term time, so the term time holiday requests. Are met with a very clear response. Each individual request is made, is met with a a clear response, which makes it really clear to each parent separately. That you're not going to be considering it authorised, that you may well be thinking about penalty notices or prosecution. Um. Those responses can be sent by email moving forward, but you need to obviously make sure that you've got the individual email address for each parent. Um. You could hand deliver it to parents if they're in the building, you could hand the letter. So thank you very much for submitting your leave of ab- absence request. Here's the response from the head teacher um and then make a log of who it is that's handing that response across, what the date is, what the time is, which parent it is. Um. But if you can't send it by email, knowing you've got the definite email address, or you can't send it by. Um. You can't hand it over personally to the parent, then you will in those cases still need to send it by Royal Mail First Class Post. So. That's the expectation moving forward. And the notice to improve, obviously, we need you to. Use it in the vast majority of cases. You need to share with us if you're not going to use it. Uh. The the rationale as to why you've chosen not to use that particular document. So there's lots of things that have been made available. Actually, since this slide was put together for the virtual training, it's been updated. So I can say that the model attendance policy is on the EFA website. The attendance leaflet, which is not mandatory, but it's available for. That's also on the um EFA website with a link from the S S S schools info link available. There's a poster. Um. That's available um which helps um schools to help parents to understand the changes to fines, particularly for term time holidays. The updated code of conduct, as I say, has already been published on the Essex County Council website since the fifth of June. Tables have been setting out changes to register codes. Um. And also the grounds under which pupils can be removed from old. They've also been shared um on S S Schools Info Link for Schools. Um. This list here, some of these things have already been shared. So um. The updated letter templates, they've already been made available. So there's some softened wording, support first. Ethos templates that are already available on S S Schools Info Link for Schools to make use of and adapt to their own processes. We are signposting within those templates parents to the school's attendance policy, which obviously will have the named senior attendance champion. There should be clear contact details for who they need to be contacting if they need to talk things through about attendance concerns. There's attendance and absence coding summaries. So there's a one-page summary. Um. There's also an expanded version of that. There's some updated. Um. Leave of absence request forms now available on S S Schools Info Link along with. The response letter templates that you might want to use. So do definitely familiarise yourselves because I don't see. Um. Any sort of sh- slowdown in terms of the request that might be coming through. There's an updated action plan attendance contract which is on its way. So that isn't yet on the 22nd of July when I'm recording this. That isn't yet available, but it will be by the start of the new academic year. The notice to improve template is available already on S S Schools Info Link for colleagues to make use of. And the online referral form will be available for the start of the new academic year, which is obviously going to prompt some of those questions I've talked to you through in terms of pre-referral evidence moving forward. Return to school, um check-in conversation template, that is available on S S Schools Info Link already for colleagues to have a look at and see whether it's something you want to weave into. Your common consistent practice. for colleagues to have a look at and see whether it's something you want to weave into your common consistent practice. And the templates for letters, obviously, they, as I've said, they're already available. And we are looking to put in place a, 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 a one-stop shop essentially is, is what it will be. An attendance policy and practice guidance document, which will be very similar to the, for those of you who are aware, the Children Missing Education and Elective Home Education Guides that have been available for quite some time for colleagues who, who obviously deal with children missing education, elective home education cases from the school's perspective. So we have, as a local authority, have made lots and lots and lots of stuff available already. There's still plans for more to be made available. We're going to hopefully use the summer holiday period to just bring some of that together, get that available for you for the start of the new academic year. And just rest assured really colleagues that as, as far as, as a local authority is concerned, we are really working hard in the background to put as much support in place for our Essex School so that you can be ready for those changes that this statutory guidance is going to bring into effect from the 19th of August onwards. So don't think that we haven't sort of been aware of all of this, haven't been mindful of what you might need. And as I say, a lot of it's already been made available with more to come essentially. And the only thing I've got left to say really as part of this is, thank you very much. I mean, it's been a long old session, so one hour and 51 minutes is what my timer is saying. But hopefully a long old session that's got a lot of information within it, that's going to support you to be able to really be prepared for the changes that are coming into effect and be able to really feel that the support first ethos is something that you're going to be able to evidence to my team moving forward. So that when we have requests for statutory legal intervention, we will be able to take those forward on your behalf, confident that we'll get good outcomes in court if that's where those cases end up. So thank you from me, Anita Patelingham, wishing you all a wonderful summer break for this academic year, knowing that when we hit September 2024, we've got lots of changes to, to get our heads around. But there's a lot of support available for you to be able to get your heads around those changes moving forward. Thank you very much and goodbye.